Hey, welcome back everybody. This is the afternoon session of August 15th. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a tax deed hearing. So I'll turn it over to our esteemed Treasurer, Joanna DeFort.
Good afternoon Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
You will see I set on your desk the pile of tax deed properties that we have for this year, and there are six in the pile. Each one of them is a little unique. I'm going to start with the one on top, W.E. Selman, parcel number RP-15-N03E-029010. And this is unique in that it was a survey discrepancy that was discovered in 2016 when our GIS maps went live. The ladies downstairs did a really good job of recon on this property and figuring out exactly what went wrong. Because of the discrepancy, what happened was it's a 50-foot wide stretch of land, and since it didn't belong to anybody, it went back to the original owner of the land before the land was subdivided. And Mr. Selman passed away several years ago. His heirs have already gone through probate and closed the probate case and have chosen not to keep this property. It's, like I said, it's 50 feet wide. It is completely encumberanced by an easement of a canal. So the property is the canal, and it is fully encumbered by an easement. So you can see how the survey discrepancy happened because that canal's been there for 100 years. And anyway, so the family's not interested in retaining this property. They would like it to go to tax deed auction. During this process, we also contacted both of the adjoining landowners and spoke with them about the potential upcoming sale. We also spoke with, it's not Center Irrigation District anymore, I believe it's Gold Fork Irrigation District, and they also know that the property is up for sale. They are the ones that maintain the canal that runs through this property. So, kind of a unique situation, but this one will probably make it all the way to the date of the auction. Any questions on that?
Probably further against it. It probably won't sell.
If it does sell, it could sell only for the amount of taxes owed, which is $523.90 to one of the adjoining landowners, or potentially, I think that the irrigation district also has some interest in owning the property.
Joanna, I think I'm sure, but that's the minimum bid is what's owed.
Correct.
We can't take a lower bid.
We could take a lower bid and then do a cancellation of taxes, but that would be at the discretion of the Commissioners.
That was the question, because I think that may be where we're heading with this one, but we'll see.
Potentially.
Why couldn't something like that be dedicated just to the, if there's no enters, why couldn't it just be dedicated to the irrigation district?
We have to go through the tax deed process and try to recoup the taxes on the property. I did just get back from the Treasurers Conference up in Bonner's Ferry last week, and in speaking with a few of the other Treasurers around the state, there has been some precedence in speaking with the landowner, and if the landowner would like to sign the property over to the county, we can go through that process, and then we could deed it to an adjoining landowner or sell it to them. The problem in this instance is that the title of the land is in the name of a deceased person, and the family does not have any interest in reopening the probate case to try to change it. So this, for this particular piece of property, this is the easiest way to handle it.
And so what date is this going to be sold? Why is it not being sold today?
Today is the hearing for the tax deed. We will, at the end of this, we'll set the date for the tax auction, tax deed auction.
Yeah, basically, this, we hear them all today, and then we make a motion to put them up for sale on a certain date.
I remember doing that last year.
Anytime between 30 days and 14 months after we've taken possession. I'm going to recommend that we set the tax auction for October 17th, which is exactly 60 days out from. All right, any other questions on this one? Okay, next. This is a very small parcel of land, .0081 acres of bare land, and it's currently owned by the Turtleling Land Company. This also had quite the colorful past. Essentially, when the subdivision was plotted in this area, one of the adjoining property owners had a building on their land that came right up to the property line, the eve of the building did. And because of setback requirements that were established after this building was built, they needed, you know, seven-foot setbacks on each side of the overhanging roof line. And so there was a small parcel, this is just a little triangle of land, that could not be incorporated into the subdivision, and so it remained in the developing owner's name. And the Turtleling Land Company paid the taxes on this parcel for several years. I believe the subdivision was created in the 80s, and they no longer want to be responsible for this piece of property and did not want to reach out to the adjoining landowners to try to sell it to either of them. They would like to let it go in tax deed auction. So, like I said, extremely small piece of land. That building has since been demolished and is no longer there. It doesn't have access, it's not buildable size, so this is going to be an interesting one to see what happens to it. From the Treasurers Conference, I did come up with some new ideas of what we could potentially do. There was just no time between last Friday, when I got back, and the hearing today. So I'd like to continue down the path of putting this in tax deed auction. If it doesn't sell at the auction in two months, there are some avenues that we can explore.
Good.
All right, and then the last four are all owned by the same property owner. And once again, the things you learn at conference, I decided to do a search of obituaries in the state of Idaho, and this woman has, is deceased. She passed away in 2016, and there is a probate case for her assets, and I was able to look that up this morning with the help of the Court Clerk's Office and contacted the lawyer that is in charge of that probate case, and he is out of the office until later this week. So, once again, I don't believe that these four properties will make it to the auction. I think that they will be redeemed before then, but because I don't know anything about the situation, I believe we need to continue down the path of tax deed and go ahead and take possession of title. There is an opportunity for the previous owner or the heir of the owner to redeem these properties as long as they pay the taxes.
These are all those little lots up in Payette Lake Club, right?
Yeah, so these off Warren Wagon Road on the west side of Payette Lake, there's a subdivision up on the hill, and these are at the very end of a dead-end road back there.
Yeah. They're all a tenth of an acre or less. Payette Lake subdivision had a lot of this over the years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I actually, actually bought two or three of these from, with a quick claim deed.
Oh, okay.
From this club, this, or homeowner association.
Yeah.
They could do that if these adjacent property owners would like to have those attached to their property, as that sounds like.
They, they can't come in, so we've had lots of inquiry on several other parcels. You can't come in and pay someone's taxes and then retain ownership of the property. You would have to have an agreement between the current owner and yourself if you wanted to, you know, file a quick claim deed and get ownership of the property.
So Joanna, if the attorney calls back and says these are in probate, you can't sell them?
Well, I'd like to explore the options, and I said I want to recommend October 17th for our tax deed auction, but if there's any sort of delay because of that particular case, which I believe the case is closed, so they may have to reopen it, but if there is a delay, by Idaho State Statute, we have up to 14 months before we have to auction these properties off. So we have time to settle things.
So the worst it could have is maybe do the front two, and then these other four maybe go later?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and just another note, the Selman property, that very first one, they actually have delinquent taxes back to 2017. Gabe chose not to auction them off or put them through tax deed because of the small amount that was due, but now that I know the history of this property, I think that this is going to be the quickest and easiest way to dispose of it so that it's off of our tax rolls.
Well, and I don't know if legally we can just say, well, we're going to give it to the irrigation district. I don't think we can legally do that.
No, we can't do that unless we had possession of the land. And once we have possession via tax deed, you are required by state statute to auction the highest bidder.
So at this time, this is an action item. I need a motion to approve the six parcels up for tax deed to be scheduled on October 17th. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Any more discussion? Good job on these. I guess the only thing I might add is maybe include a map, some of these.
I'm trying to find this stuff right now on the assessor.
Oh, you know, I do have maps printed in each of the files, so if you're interested, I can email them to you. We used, we gave them to the sheriff's office when they posted each of the properties so that they could find them.
Well, and the day of the auction, it'll help too, to have it leased up on a screen or something.
I can give you just a quick description. So the Selman property is off Good Lane, right below the county pit, between Cascade and Donley. There's, you know where the canal runs along the bank right there. The Turtleling Land Company is on the east side of Payette Lake, right next to, I believe it's in the Pilgrim's Cove area. And I wish I had measurements on this particular lot because it's about 20 feet by 20 feet.
That's what I'm trying to find. Do you have an address for that or anything?
No, there's no address. Can you type the parcel number into the assessor's map?
The map will work.
And it is working. You can also type in the owner's name typically, and this particular person only owns three or four properties, so you can narrow it down. I can get you an address of one of the adjoining lots. Sherry, I can email that to you. And then we already discussed the Potts properties off of Warren Wagon Road on the west side of Payette Lake in McCall.
Joanna, on the Turtleling property, you have contacted the neighbors?
I have. Oh, no, I have not contacted the neighbors. I've contacted the landowner. The adjoining neighbors didn't come up in the title search, and so I didn't feel it was my place at that time to contact them. I will go through the process of contacting them now to let them know about the auction.
Maps are not working.
Those guys.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Did we vote on that yet?
Not yet.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Right.
Oh, you give me an address on the Turtleling one.
I will. I did my best to take up the full 30 minutes, but you're still about seven minutes short.
You did great. You did 23 minutes.
I wouldn't start until 10 after, so.
Joanna, do you need these copies for anything?
No. They're free.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Oh, wow, that is... Yeah, I found the Turtleling one. I can't imagine that the guy that lives right there is not going to want that.
Yeah, well, wouldn't they, you know, attach it to the property? We could put a little, you know, county boat lunch off of it into the lake.
Or we'd be crossing, that's actually, I think, either state ground or BOR.
Oh, let's take this as walkover.
That's the, that's the parcel.
Oh, yeah, that one will go, somebody will want it.
If this guy doesn't want it.
State-owned property next to that stuff there.
That's what, yeah, I mean, there's, must be.
Okay, we got about six more minutes until our next agenda item, so we'll mute the sound, and we'll be back here in about six minutes. Hey, we're back. Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. This is to approve or deny resolution for Cougar Island. As everyone knows, this was presented to us from the city of McCall here a couple weeks ago. Personally, I don't think this is a wise decision on the county's part to take on the liability of, of an impact of this pie on property values, and even though I'm bummed that Cougar Island is going to be developed and sold, to me, it's no different than any other piece of ground around McCall Lake, whether it's on East Side Drive or Warren Wagon. It's just a piece of property with a lake around it, and I cannot support designating that as a critical area of concern because I think that will affect the auction values and could lead to liability issues from the state.
My concern is, I think the area of impact designation is a planning tool. That has a plot on it. In my estimation, that plot goes with the ground, and it's just the same as if you subdivided your property, that plot would go with ground. I don't see how we designate that as an area of critical concern when there's already a plot on it, so I am in disagreement on that stand. I do think that, you know, this is within the area of city impact, which we are currently looking at and trying to work through the concerns that we have there and the fact that, you know, it needed to be updated every 10 years and hasn't been at this moment in time, so this is part of that. I would encourage the city, again, our letter asked them to annex Cougar Island within the city limits and make it part of their jurisdictional boundaries and their requirements, and I would again encourage them to do that.
Yeah, I think that we pretty much spelled that out in our first letter to them, and I, I think in this case, it'd be nice to just follow that up with a response to their most recent letter and just, you know, to the fact that we're just talking about. I don't know, I just don't, I'm with you guys, I don't see that we have much of an option to that right now.
I'm very concerned. You know, if somebody litigates on this issue, my concern is that litigation may set precedence for the further 5,000 acres that is facing us, I mean, shortly. We have to do, we have to make sure we do the right thing with this and not set illegal precedents as we move forward, and I would be very concerned about Cougar Island and the ramifications of losing legal battle there, so.
But this, this started back in, what, 18 or?
14, I think.
14, 14. We were told right here in this room that they were going to do that, just what they did, subdivided and platted, and they did, and we didn't. Right now, it's kind of 12th hour, you know, so we need to, and just get ourselves, you know, stick ourselves into a bad situation.
This is an action item, so we need a motion?
I'd make a motion that we ask Mr. Oki to respond to the city with our official response, that we unfortunately will not be able to comply with the request of creating or supporting them officially with a area of special, area of critical concern designation, and with all reasons that we stated.
I would second that motion, and then I'll ask one other question, but...
Okay, we have a motion to deny the request to support the resolution for Cougar Island. You have a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I'm assuming, Brian, you'll scratch that letter up and get it to us for next week, and you can sign it all and send it off.
And also, I would like, you know, so they have another area of critical concern that has been designated, but we weren't asked to ratify that. So, you know, I think it's a change in their policy, and I don't know why.
And that was in, that was in the impact area as well.
It was in the impact area as well.
Which area was this?
Six months ago.
No, and where's, where is this? I don't remember this at all.
Used to, middle school, wasn't it?
No, that's why.
It's that big subdivision that they're concerned about on the east side of town, that they declared that area of critical concern, and we were not asked to ratify that. So I don't understand why this makes us different, and to me, that's a legal concern if we do something different than what precedence has already been set. So that might be another part of the letters.
I'll pass that out the letter if you'd like me to.
Well, yeah. Not sure that we need to, or messing with, getting too mixed up with that.
Well, it isn't an official area of critical concern if we didn't ratify the resolution. So it's really not legal.
Yeah, I don't know, and that's my question is, you know, it's different. We're being asked to do something different this time than last time, so what is that?
What does ratification really mean in this case?
Do you agree with them?
Yeah, it's a...
Well, the, the...
Brian, you're going to have to be on microphone.
So the, the request, the request to ratify the recommendation from the city is an acknowledgement that this is in the area of impact, and that the county has jurisdiction in the area of impact. So it's to meet one of those legal hurdles that is, is in place. So I think that the extent that this is a little bit different process is, it is more in line with a fairly recent Supreme Court decision and underscores the need for us to get with the city and renegotiate the terms of our agreement between the city and the county on how to proceed forward with dealing with these kinds of issues in the area of impact.
So it's important to stress to all the cities.
All, exactly. All of the cities, those, those agreements are, are due to be renegotiated or re-reviewed.
In this scenario, this is the only city that we actually adopt their ordinances in the impact area. The other two cities, our ordinances still are in place in that impact area.
Right.
So we're managing cities differently in Valley County.
That answer your question?
I think so, yeah, I just...
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. We're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next item is not an action item. This is a workshop. This will be the last thing under our agenda for today. This is for risk management. So at this time, I'm going to ask HR to come on up and see what we got.
And you don't have anything? I didn't send any documents with it, because I really have questions. So let me start beginning. We are working on risk mitigation. We are working on a risk mitigation plan, and part of it is IT, but there's way more than just IT. And so where I need help is on some of the questions that only you guys can answer. You guys, you're not a guy, but.
I accept the general premise.
Okay, that you all can answer for me. So we need to determine what is a critical function. So what, if, if we had a fire in the courthouse, as an example, and now we have to do some type of regrouping, we've got to go somewhere and start functioning again, what is a critical function? Did we determine that with COVID? Or did we just have the departments do it?
I don't know if we did it for COVID, but I think there's a lot of things that by code we have to do.
Okay.
Such as appraise properties, flight taxes, provide security.
I think this means, though, the next day. What do we have to open up for the next day?
Exactly. So, so yeah, those are true. Those are critical things that we need to do. But until we can really pivot and figure out where we're going to set up shop, right? What, if, if this building is quarantined, what do we absolutely have to have up and running tomorrow morning?
We have to be able to issue building permits.
Okay.
We have to be able to take checks in the treasurer's office. We have to be able to take payments in court clerks.
And they all have to be done the next day?
Hmm.
Payments and court clerk, can that be done online?
Yeah.
Can be done online.
So can treasurer.
So can treasurer.
Yeah.
I'm thinking more like banking function. You have to balance the bank account to make sure that we're in balance every day. So I would think that the treasurer's banking function would be important. You have to record documents.
Any recording documents, you know, passports, marriages, divorces, any kind of land issued documents would have to be recorded. What else?
Ownership transfer would be really important. Have to be done the next day.
DMV, since we're going to be down to one office, we're going to have to set up another.
Have to be all be done online.
Can all be done online.
We would have to have, let's see, this, so is it just this building or this area? Because jail would be critical. If we have an earthquake and this building falls, this whole area is going to be a problem.
Right. And so the jail is always going to be there. But if, if we had an earthquake and they had to evacuate, their evacuation plan calls for busing them to Ada, I mean Adams County or one of the other places, Ada County, somewhere where they can, so they already have that in place.
Okay.
As far as, you know, what would we do if we, if we, if the jail had issues, how would we handle our, our?
Makes sense.
It seemed like every department would have to have a, would have to know where they take up business the next day.
Right. I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, in other words, I show up in my office, tell them, where did I go? EOC?
I think that's what we're working on. That's what we're designing right now.
Yeah, that's what we're working on now.
I think that prosecuting attorney has to have access to something to be able, you know, to meet people's 24-hour notice or whatever it is. You have to be arraigned in so long.
Yeah, yeah.
48 hours?
Court services and prosecutor's office has very time-sensitive deadlines that need to be met.
So do you guys already have a risk management plan built around that, or does that need to be a part of ours?
I think that there needs to be a plan specific for our office, but it needs to dovetail into whatever the county's plan is. Goes to the question of what Pat's asking is, you know, how's the judge going to be able to hear arraignment if the building is unavailable? Where does, where does he go? You know, what's the phone number or Zoom hyperlink that needs to be used? All of those details need to be figured out so, so there's a continuity of operations regardless of whether or not the building is, building itself is available.
So in my world, coming from the personal world, the bank had set up with another bank to be able to set up in their lobby and function. So we have three cities within the county. How do we partner with those cities to be able to set up, you know, temporary locations or whatever that looks like?
Well, and that's one of the things on my list.
I guess you need, still need to know who, right?
Well, and, and some of these I can get from departments, but my experience has been that upon occasional, department will not be able to determine what is absolutely critical and what is just something we do every day. So I was hoping you guys could just give us an overall of, you know, what are the critical things? What, if we were to, if I'm going to a department and I'm going to say, give me your critical tasks that need to be done, what, what, how, what is a critical task? What do you think is a critical task? I think Oki was right on when he talked about we have time bound, they have to be done within 48 hours.
That's what I'm wondering, Pat, if we have something that is next day, two day, five day, 30 day.
Right. So what are the things that need to be done? If you were to describe a critical thing that we have to have done within the next two days, what would that be? How would you describe that?
I don't know all the codes, statutes, but anything that is.
Definitely arraignments.
Yep, got that.
Anything that we are statutorily required has to happen, and that's.
Really depends on the time of the year, too, if it's.
I don't think building permits, you don't have to.
No, probably, you could probably do those later. But like if it's during property tax drive, say it's, you know, the 15th of December and everything's supposed to be in by the 20th, that would be a priority to set that.
Yeah, that would be.
Function up. So it depends on the time of the year as well.
Sometimes.
You're, you're trying to identify sensitive services?
Mm-hmm.
Essential services.
Um, I don't know if this is really essential, Pat, but it's going to be pretty quick, and that is the ability to receive bills and pay bills. We have, we pay bills every two weeks, so within that two-week time period, we would have to find some way to set that system up to take claims.
And again, within a certain sensitive timeframe. I mean, if Jeff's road department burned down, how do we plow snow in the middle of winter? You know, I mean, there's, he needs, what would be the backup? You call all of the vendors in that are third-party throughout the county and have them help us for a while.
Well, and I think in Jeff's situation, it would be the loss of the mechanic shop. That would be the big hit.
Most of the equipment's going to be.
Most equipment's out, the gas and fuel are crushed apart. So we need another building where they can come move in that's heated, that would change oil and fix graders and that kind of stuff.
But they wouldn't need it tomorrow, they think.
Yeah, they, within a couple of weeks, probably.
Couple of weeks, yeah.
Biggest thing with those.
They have two locations.
Is electricity to keep them warm, plugged in at night.
Yeah, and so many of them are on satellite places.
Mm-hmm. And we really kind of have the Lake Fork shop to handle a lot of that.
Mm-hmm. Cinda, you're within 30 days, planning could be put off. Is there anything that you would have to do within? I would think building department and planning and zoning is like 30 days. IT would have to be immediate. It would be the highest priority just to be able to get everybody else up.
Does the senior center have broadband?
No, I don't.
I don't know how good it is.
Good question.
They do have broadband.
Who? The senior center.
That's our building, too, yeah.
In town.
Well, and that's the thing to think about, where would we put all these different departments, you know? EOC's only going to take so much.
EOC is not, it's not a good backup place.
It's too close to where we're at.
Well, we could put, you know, like the judge and prosecution and public defenders and that and keep.
Maybe, what if?
Maybe even a mini courtroom in there upstairs, but.
They should go to the annex.
The annex.
Or even the annex, yep.
Because what happens if, if it's something like a bomb that went off and the whole block is, or, you know, we, we've had all of our pipes froze, or we had a flood, or, you know, you have to kind of think about, that's not a good option depending on what happened, so.
So almost all of our critical data is someplace in the cloud.
We're trying to get there.
You know.
Not quite there yet.
At least it should be. That would be, to me, you know, the real thing is, is if all this stuff goes away, the, the data, the information that we have came to just go away. We have to, that's, that's where you come back to IT, that's.
Yeah.
And that has to be done before the disaster.
He does have a backup program then.
Yeah.
The servers are here, but he's got it backed up or there. He's got him backed up, I think, to EOC, but he's working on getting them so they're also backed up on totally another site, like at the, somewhere.
A lot of people are already working with that one. A lot of departments, it's just a matter of where can I take my computer and set up operations, you know? It's unlikely you lose everything, which is kind of a good argument for whether or not you want all your stuff in one centralized location like a courthouse.
Exactly.
You know, maybe annexes are not such a bad idea from the standpoint of the safety, you know, things like that.
Well, I just know that that's available. I think that's, it was nobody's fault that it turned out that way. It would just kind of happen that way, but it makes you think about doing, not doing anything different with that building.
Yeah, it's a good redundancy.
Yeah.
Because one of the things that, something else is the thoughts on temporary operations. And a couple of things that I wrote down was Lake Fork and the annex, and then you mentioned cities. So that's a good opportunity as well. Cascade City's pretty close, but.
If we develop a new operational place for the road crew, you know, that could have space. In other words, you do have, you have all these different spots. EOC's over there, maybe if this happens, you got that or, you know.
Yeah, but I think the only other heated building down there is the welding shop. I don't think you'd want to put people in there in the welding shop.
No, but we could just for temporary purposes, you know, throw them in that conference room.
I don't know if there's legal ramifications behind it, but what about churches? But we don't have community centers really per se.
That's another thing.
Churches, we've got.
We have the community center, I believe the seniors is now called, the community center.
Got the community.
Which is a backup building, I think.
That would be a backup building, yeah.
You got the American Legion down the street, that's a great spot.
Yeah, American Legion would be another.
Yeah. It's got a lot of room.
The thing is, is that in this risk management plan, you got to have all of those negotiations, if, I don't know if that's the right word, but all of those things in place because you can't do it. You have to be able to just walk in the next day.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, where we own all the buildings, I don't think that's going to be an issue. It's going to be, you know, whether or not, okay, what is going to happen with the seniors? Or what's going to happen with probation, or what's going to happen with McCall City Police?
Probation would have to probably stay, but like the courts.
You want to come and talk about risk management with us?
Yeah.
Say hello.
Risk mitigation.
How you doing?
Good.
Yeah.
Sorry for the interruption.
You come in to pay court fines or what?
Yeah. Reporting for jury duty.
Good for you.
We're, we're having a vacation and we're camp, we're camping over at, we camp at Lake Cascade.
Yeah.
And I was like, well, I can't not come and see.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's great to see you, man.
Good to see you all. Yeah, thanks for going well.
We miss you around here, but Adam's doing an awesome job.
Yeah, he's great. Yeah, I feel good that you got him.
Yeah.
I feel a little responsibility for bringing Brian on board.
Thank you.
Both Brian's.
Yeah, yeah.
Both Brian's have been phenomenal.
That's great.
Whole new attitude, everything is just.
Huge addition to our camp.
You guys are in good, good hands.
Yeah.
The kids are timing me because they said, you're going to be there forever.
Of course.
I was like, I just can't not say hello.
Well, I'm glad you did.
Well, have fun camping.
Thank you.
You should got some nice hot weather.
Yeah.
How's the toxic algae? Are we okay?
I think you're okay. Depends on where you're swimming.
Okay.
Very good right now.
We're going to be up by the West Mountain Campground, by Huckleberry kind of.
Should be fine.
Stay out of the green water, you should be fine.
All right. It's great to see you all.
Concealed.
All right, take care.
Okay, what's next?
Um, okay. So we were talking about the buildings that we had, so I'm just talking about the ones that we don't own.
Yeah, some American Legion.
The churches, American Legion, we don't own that for one, yeah. Just the other ones that, you know, dealing with the cities is pending. I mean, it might be having a pretty big.
I don't know if the city even has room in the city offices.
But what about the fire station?
Oh, fire stations.
Does it have that big room up the street?
Fire stations, good.
Only fire station is a good spot, they got a lot of room.
So in thinking about that, too, if you go into, say we went into the senior center with our, our payroll, account payroll, you got to have cybersecurity in place. So wherever our backup is, they have to have a certain level of security on their systems in order for us to even be able to do that.
But that's something that IT could handle because I don't know how it's going to be setting up the VPN. But they can look at the IP address wherever we're at and they can secure it that way. I think, he was telling me something about doing using an IP address and doing it that way. So that would again be something that IT would have, that would be part of their function with this, is trying to figure out, you know, if we move to another area, how secure is it?
Well, and what is their broadband there because, you know, I mean, you can't put us into somewhere where it's got, you know, broadband.
Well, and that would be a situation we'd have to get after Zipler or whoever Sparklight is providing it, say, we need it like tomorrow.
Yeah.
Those, those kind of things would happen, I think.
They would. That would be part of the vendors that we'd have to have involved.
We'd be way over budget on everything, though.
Well, yeah. Plus rebuilding the building, but.
Of course, insurance should kick in if something like that happens.
Yeah.
But it'd take a few years to get it done.
Yeah, it would. These are great ideas. And then, so on the implementation, so we're putting this together, we're getting it implemented. I've had, asked Gabby to join us so that, well, I'm not doing it, but when we start implementing, so what the implementation is, is, okay, we've had a disaster, who are the people that need to be on the team to move us, to get us moving?
Each department head.
Each department head.
Each elected official.
I think that the chairman of the board would be.
All of us are going to have to be involved because it'll be a lot of work for everybody to figure out.
You have to have one contact point.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
To start with. And where would that contact point be? Would it be a Gabby who's going to be in charge of risk management or, you know, Pat that's in charge of risk management? Would it be the chairman in order to?
Get it going.
Start a, you know, a phone tree.
And I think it's going to be, to me, I want to make it a group effort.
You know, but what Sheriff is asking is this building falls down, sheriff's office has to call somebody that gets everything going. What, who is that person that the sheriff's office calls and said, we have to initiate business continuity because we had just lost a building? Okay? So who would they contact to get things going? Would that be the chairman? Would that be?
I think it's our risk manager, maybe.
What's that?
I think maybe it's our risk manager.
Yeah, I think probably, too. I think, I think, see, my role is more of, hey, we need to buy this and this and this for this building because we need to move into it. Will you authorize that? And those are the kind of decisions that I think somebody in this chair would make.
And we would need a calling tree of all employees, Pat?
Oh, yeah, that, that would be good.
Yeah.
We have that in payroll right now, we just would have to have it in a safe place.
I'll just, I'll just kind of tie in with our EOC manager, you know, I mean, that's.
Or emergency manager?
Yeah.
Ron would be.
Um, that, I honestly, I think that's more for natural disasters. I don't think he's.
That's for the whole county.
Area, but, I mean, doesn't, that, that position responds to individual instances.
I'm sure that he would be engaged.
Yeah, and so if you had to have a person that started an emergency plan or something to try to, you know, it seems like that's a really logical place in the county, how somebody, you know.
I don't know, I think that's, he's more of a natural disaster kind of manager, not a physical structure. I think that would have to be someone from inside, maybe.
But he's.
He had abilities and grounds or something, but.
He's local, though. He's local, I mean, that's, we have those guys like him all over the country, but he, you know, he's not going. But he, you know, he's not gonna handle something in Washington DC. He's gonna handle something in Valley County.
Not sure that that would be under his perm.
Well, they would certainly have the structure.
And they got the expertise to start putting together operational teams, you know, like...
But that's what the plan does. So the plan that I'm working on right now is the one that lines out who that operational team is gonna be and who goes where. And that's what, that's what this program is that Gabby and I are working on along with other people. But that, this plan will say, this is what happens when we have to evacuate or when we can't use the courthouse, or we can't use the annex, or whatever. This is what we have to do. And these are the steps that we need to take. So it outlines that plan like the emergency operations plan does. But this is to keep the business up and running.
And I would assume, Pat, that, to me, one of the first things that we would have to concentrate on is communication.
Yes.
Phones, computers, servers, switches, all that kind of stuff. It's gonna have to be brought back online or replaced with a new one or whatever. So to me, I think the communication would be the first big step of making sure that we get, everybody's able to reach each other. And then I think we would need a separate committee to come in and manage the tearing down of the old facility, cleaning it up, getting plans put together, getting folks together to figure out what kind of a facility we want.
Yeah.
But that can kinda come later, it's not like the next day.
Yeah.
You almost need to put in there the POI. McKenzie, at this moment in time, is your communication to outside world. Because something like this happens, you have to immediately get in contact with all of the...
Well, and there's things like, you gotta make sure somebody's getting the mail every day and getting that to the right departments, and that function still continues.
Yeah, that would be more of a three or four or five-day type thing.
Yeah, but it's pretty close.
Yeah.
Them are, get ahold of the insurance carriers immediately.
ICRAIM would be notified.
ICRAIM would be one of the first ones.
So Pat, it's almost like there's a job description for the risk manager. And you have to do these things, and then who's your team to be able to accomplish that?
We used to have some risk management plans, Pat, I don't know if they're still around.
I don't, yeah, I was trying to find out if they were so outdated.
Yeah, they're pretty generalized.
Yeah, they were, they weren't very helpful.
At one time, we had a HR person, and then we had a separate risk management person.
I'm kinda familiar with like the ICS system where, you know, you have a, like, in a federal agencies, if you have some sort of major disaster, you create an incident command team.
That's exactly what this would be.
And that's where I was thinking, a little bit broader than just us little folks here in the, in the, directly, you know? I mean, that becomes a kind of a specialty thing. And that's where I think stuff like the, you know, our emergency manager, I just, I don't know. I see that, something like a, you know, a lot of times something happens in the county, who do you call? You call the sheriff's office, it's kinda where everything starts. You know, if you have something happen to your, our facilities, you'd call what? Emergency Management System to get something started, to get, you know, bring people together, create that team, you know?
It might be that we don't have to recreate the wheel. I mean, we are, I'm gonna go to that conference in October. I don't know if you guys are or not, but we are being invited and paid for. And it's an emergency, it is the state will pay three commissioners to go. And it is emergency planning for the future. So, I mean, there's, it's two or three days worth.
What, could you send that out to us? Because I saw something about that, and I think I deleted it, but, and make sure Juan gets it, too. I thought it was for emergency managers, not commissioners.
So, yes, not have to reinvent the wheel. The Idaho Office of Environment, of Emergency Management has a lot of resources available. And I think they are very anxious to get local governments up and running with these continuity operations plan. In fact, I think, hasn't Colonel Ritchie been here and gave a presentation to you? He, he's the expert. And I think they may even have a template for creating this document. You just have to fill in the details.
I got this from my CRAM. So I have the template for my CRAM, but there are questions that I couldn't answer to get it going.
So this is at the Riverside Hotel, and it's the October eleventh through the thirteenth. And it's preparedness and cybersecurity. So it's totally, the entire state is talking about preparedness and cybersecurity.
I think what you'll hear at that conference is that you have an obligation to have this plan for two reasons. One, you have to stand up your services that you're statutorily required to provide. Even if they are thirty days out or twenty days out, you need to have a plan for, how are we gonna continue that? There needs to be redundancy in your data, whether it's electronic or whether it's paper. There's redundancy so you don't lose history. And then, three, having a written plan will help you understand where your deficiencies are. So if you don't have enough physical space for people to work from, do you have enough internet capacity for non-essential, not non-essential, but employees who do not have to be at a physical location, can they work from home? And still, the county can still continue to provide those services. So when you put this plan together, you'll be able to evaluate whether or not you have what you need resource-wise to accomplish that, when that comes. And then, I guess, the other component that I've been involved in is doing an inventory of your resources. Because if there's something wrong with this building that people can't come here, we have an emergency. We have obligations to respond to an emergency. So we, I mean, obviously, that would probably affect sheriff's office, maybe, maybe everybody.
Yes.
And having an inventory, have an inventory of equipment and other resources to respond to an emergency is obviously an important part of a plan like this.
So this is, they will sponsor up to three county commissioners and one county emergency manager along with one cybersecurity professional.
That's why, I was getting back to this thing, you know, when you have a plan, you really have to have someone that just, that's what they do. Their job is to manage emergencies or be alerted to emergencies and start something. You know, and it's all great, we have this plan, but you can't just be sitting on somebody's shelf here and then somebody the next morning wonder, well, who's gonna start something here? Who's gonna get a team together?
Well, but the thing is, well, I guess what's kinda tripping me up, Ed, is the fact that, okay, Juan, it's good for the natural disaster, natural mercies, but he doesn't know what's going on in this facility. We do, so I think that person should be someone, not necessarily the chairman or a commissioner, but someone from this facility. And that person is gonna need everybody on board.
Right, absolutely.
And to make this shift.
I think that that comes at as a designation. You know, as we move through this, it's, who is that?
Now it's a question.
It's gonna take a lot of leadership to keep it all together and keep it from falling apart.
Yeah.
I think Gabby's perfect. She has, she has a husband who's in law enforcement.
Exactly.
You are perfect.
She's perfect.
I appreciate that part, like, now we're getting into it.
Well, the train is really moving.
So, well, this, this is a good place to start. So I will, our next, our next step really is for, based on this, and I'm just, I got this from my CRAM. So it's a sample business continuity plan. And we need to review it every year. And so the next step really is to start working with a committee and probably maybe the security committee. But we need to go to each department and have them define what their critical operations are and their timeline that you talked about.
And then who can take over for someone if someone is injured or lost, or, you know, who's gonna be next in line to take over that, okay?
Yes, so those are the...
And written procedures so that person next in line can actually step in and do the job.
Those are gonna be the first things to burn up, is written procedures.
That's why this is a...
You're in the cloud, so thank heavens. We put them in the cloud.
It'll be on 365, it'll be out on the sheriff's...
My big worry, honestly, in this whole building is the laser fish. Everything is on that down there, so that's the first room we gotta save.
Hopefully, it's in a vault. Is it in a vault?
I don't even know what's got a sprinkler system on it.
The things that aren't in laser fish? Yeah, I don't know.
Laser fish is online. I mean, you're talking about the old micro fish.
Micro fish, maybe that's what I'm talking about.
What is on?
That's in the vault down in McCord's office.
Gabby's in charge of saving that.
Just close the door.
Yeah, you know, this can't be, this emergency management thing can't be the responsibility of a single person.
Oh, no.
No, 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 no.
It has to be, it has to be an operation. And that's why I keep going back to that, people, that's their business.
Well, we're, I think that this cybersecurity, the IOEM training is gonna be critical.
Hopefully Jeremy's going with you.
I told him about it a long time ago, but I'm gonna send him another reminder right now. Once we register them, they will do all of our, all, they will set up everything as far as our reservations for hotels and everything, so.
So if they, I'm gonna also contact the Idaho Office of Emergency Management, as OK suggested. But I'm all for any templates, because I can take from one or another. We can put it together, but this helps, it gives me a good start. So I can start grabbing people and say, "I need your help." And that will probably be elected officials and...
Let me know, Pat, I'm about done here, so I can get back on more scheduled stuff. So let me know if you need help with that. That's it?
That's all I needed, thank you.
All right, well, that's the last agenda item we have on our schedule of the day. So unless there's any public out in front, which I don't see, I am going to adjourn this meeting and everybody have a great week.